All right, all rise. For the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Kathy, if you will.
Yes. Can we please have a moment of silence for all those folks with the fires in California? They've lost everything. We have, we are so grateful, so we should think about them and be grateful for what we have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. All right, welcome everyone. Like to, my first announcement would be, we had an executive session today. We discussed real estate, litigation, and that's about it, I think. Correct?
Yes.
All right. Janice, would you like to start?
Sure. Nice to see everybody out here tonight. If you've been out on the roads, it's a little bit slick, so if you have the opportunity to stay home, that's a great idea. So be careful, because we weren't expecting snow tonight. So be careful. Be safe. Thank you.
Chuck. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to announce this Saturday at Archbishop Wood, William Tennant and Wood will be wrestling at noon. This is the fourth year they're doing this. All the alumni shows up, and it's a fun day that the community gets together and tell old war stories. So if you're a wrestler or just like being around the Wood-Tennant rivalries, it's a great day at 12 o'clock at Wood.
All right, thank you. Chuck, Judy, please.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight, and I have no specific announcements, just that it's really pretty slippery out there, so be careful.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen at home, and the folks that are here tonight. You're pretty brave to come out in the snow. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. So, I don't think, we do have a presentation, but that'll be a little bit later in the evening. No land use matters, public comment. Anyone? All right.
Quiet group.
Nice. All right, let's go to the consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion once I'm through.
Motion. I want you to...
One second.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
He said, "Once I'm through."
You're jumping the gun there, Kathy.
All right, we don't have to go through it then.
No, go ahead.
All right, consider approval of Board Supervisors' minutes dated December 5th, 2024, and I'm sure we've all looked at them. Consider Anne's Choice and two Extended Care Expansion Release Number Two, final from the escrow account in the amount of $55,240.12. Appointment of Justin McBenon into a one-year term as assistant advisor on the Parks and Recreation Board, and also proposed HVAC services and maintenance agreement with Hereholzer Mechanical and Electric.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board? From the public? Being none, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Finance report. Do we have a bill list? Did you get the bill list?
Yes, I do have it, yes. I think a motion to approve the bill list, the supplemental bill listed January 16th, 2025, in the amount of $1,251,662.39. That's all I have.
And no supplemental?
No supplemental, no.
So was there a motion?
Motion to accept. I'll second it.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments from the board? All right, from the public? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five zero. All right, financials. John, you're up.
I will keep the meeting moving just as fast as it's been going.
Appreciate that.
Real quick, the reason there was no supplementals is because we approved bills last week. So, just real quick, through November 2024, we're looking in the general fund of having about $1.3 million in the black, so we're looking really good, not quite as good as last year. The revenues, we're at 101% of budget already through November. So on the revenue side, we're looking good. We're only at 93% of expenses, so again, everything's tracking the way it should be. And most important note I have here is, go Birds.
All right. Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
No questions?
Thank you.
All right, no one finished business. New business. So we have, you know, we've been talking about this last year for a few different times here, and we have architects Kimmel and Bourgatt here to...
Bogrind, I'm sorry, I spelled it wrong on the agenda.
I do read, as it's written. But anyhow, you guys, we gentlemen, would you like to come up to the podium?
Sure.
Do we have a presentation? Oh, nice. Come on up, guys.
It's beautiful.
Thanks, Tom.
Does he need a microphone, Jill? Do you need a microphone, sir?
Yeah, we have one here.
Got an extra here.
Seems to be working.
Just got to hit the button.
Buck Collins.
John.
Buck Collins, I'm the senior associate with Kimmel Bourgatt, and...
Joe Varan, principal architect and partner with Kimmel Bourgatt.
So we've had the pleasure of meeting with a number of you for the last couple of months, and I think we were asked today to come just to give everybody a little background on what we've been working on and have an idea of what we're going to be doing moving forward. We'd also like to give you just a little background on the firm, so you understand who we are and where we come from. We do things a little differently than most design firms, and so we'll go through that a little bit. Starting slide there, the Doylestown Country Club, we just put that on there because most people are familiar with it, and so that's been a complete transformation for that.
That's unbelievable.
That's a Doylestown Country Club.
Oh, I thought that's what you were going to build on our place.
If that's what you'd like.
That's what I...
Good answer.
Five ponds would be better.
Five ponds would be a lot nicer. That's right.
What's it say? It looks just like the one up in Doylestown.
Yeah. So that was actually a building that needed quite a bit of help, hadn't been touched in years, and in particular, food and beverage, which Marley, of course, is highly interested in, suffered greatly from that, and so revenue-wise, it was a challenge, and we think it turned out pretty well. That just was completed about four months ago. Joe?
Yeah. Let me drill you one. Oh, there we go.
All right, so a little bit about us. We're actually going on our 30th year of being, you know, practicing architecture. We're based in Blue Bell, Pennsylvania, so we're just right down the road from you all. And what makes us, I think, uniquely qualified for this project is not only do we do a tremendous amount of golf course work, but we do almost exclusively municipal work. So we work with municipal governments all across Pennsylvania and New Jersey, doing township buildings, just like the one we're in, community centers, recreation centers, all sorts of that fun stuff that serves, you know, serves the greater good that you all are doing here. So if you notice, our tagline up in the top right-hand corner is extraordinary solutions for ordinary budgets, and that means our commitment to really stretch every dollar that you have to make the most impact, to make Five Ponds a better place, and really help capitalize and return on your investment for the community and for the township. Next slide, please.
So I think this is a critical point that we really have been talking about through the process, is that we're all about what you do with your money and what it is at the end of the day. So our goal is to, early in the process, to define what success looks like, what really the need is, and make sure that we have the budget flow directly to the need. So in this case, it may be, there may be structural things with the building that need to be fixed, operational things with the building that need to be changed, and so the goal is for us to be able to deliver what you expect at the end of the day and not some version of what you expect.
Sorry. It's caught in the picture.
And here's what I alluded to earlier about our municipal work across Pennsylvania. Just, you can see the different types of projects, whether they're recreational or educational, or government, including, you know, police and fire, admin, public works throughout Pennsylvania. Next slide.
Just one slide on this show. I didn't get it.
So the question that we're here to help you all solve is the chicken and the egg, the need versus the money, of how do we come up with a plan and what are we going to do that's going to solve, you know, the whole end goals for Warminster and figure out how much it's going to cost in a very quick amount of time? And we've developed a process called the Master Concept Planning Process, which is five steps, which we'll walk you through here, to get to that end result very quickly by studying multiple options for transformation of Five Ponds, and working with your team and your folks, hopefully come to a quick resolution as to what is the direct path and the best outcome for all.
So I don't have the full presentation for this in here, because we wanted to be brief on it, but it's, the five steps are, first thing we do is we look at what the mission of the project is and dig into that. Core values associated with it, what's going to be important to the township. There you go. You've got it in there, right? So we don't need to repeat that, but...
No, it's all good. I just want to, I like what you did there.
Oh, great. Appreciate that. Second step is we look, we do constraints analysis, which actually we're going to start out day one. We're going to look at the building, constraints with, that would affect any future development of the building, redevelopment, expansion, and the third one, and these work simultaneously quite often. The third one is we look at program. So how's it going to be used? Who are the different people who are going to want to visit, going to use the space? And so we reflect that all those uses work together as opposed to against each other. And we haven't started any design at this point, and we want to answer all those questions first. And then we get into design solutions, and finally, we get into cost, and we'll look at this from a full cost, all-in cost standpoint, and that will be done in real time as we're going through this project, so that we're not having to value engineer out the cool things and the things you really want at the end, because there's not enough budget.
So, right out of the gate, we're going to look at the building structurally. You know, is the building feasible to build a second floor on it? How could we do it economically? We're going to look at the utilities, the infrastructure. How does the kitchen flow, you know, when you expand for multiple uses? You know, how do you have functions at the same time and still be able to serve them properly? And then really, what I had mentioned earlier is setting up the whole building for success so that you can get a return on your investment, so that you can book more events, host more events, and just make it, you know, really this wonderful asset for the township.
So these are just some projects that we've done. We thought were relevant, so that we can go through these pretty quickly, but you'll get an idea of the transformational, which is what we want you to be able to see, is how did it look before, how did it operate before, and how does it look and how does it operate when we're done? Sue.
Oops, sorry. Do you want me to stay on that one?
No, it's okay.
What happened?
Oh, there it is.
Yes, no?
We can just jump right in.
Yeah, we can just jump right in.
Doylestown faced a very similar challenge that you all have. You know, the dining and the banquet facilities were constrained. They couldn't host the events that they needed to. There was flow issues for, you know, when you would divide a space, how do you get from the kitchen to, you know, to the banquet hall without having to go out into the hallway, you know, obstruct traffic flow, things of that nature. So this, so what we did here is we kind of, also, you know, we sort of separated the functions. We created a separate bar that was more casual dining, more like, you know, sports bar feel, you know, after playing a round of golf, more casual with your family, not necessarily have the, you know, the kind of quote-unquote stuffy country club feel, and was able to centralize the kitchen to serve both of those spaces while then embracing the golf course with the big covered deck and area that you see in the south there in the bottom of the page.
Can I step on your presentation for a second?
Sure, yeah.
Please. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Go right ahead. Do you have, I think at some point you showed the infrastructure committee members that had talked to everybody a while ago, all the different architects. You had a concept, a sketch for Five Ponds. Yep. For the... We could go right to that if you don't mind.
Could we?
Sure.
If you don't mind?
No, no, no.
Because I wasn't at that meeting, and I don't want to see it.
All right, why are we not going? There we go.
Just keep going through this.
So we'll just blow through these quickly.
Well, that's a lot of slides. So these are some of your transformations, and we've seen these at the infrastructure. Yeah.
Correct.
So while we're going through the slides, I just want to say that, to your point about, you know, Five Ponds right now, and I'm going to ask Marley to come up here and talk about, briefly discuss the awards we've been getting for the golf course itself. So I think the clubhouse should mirror that as well. We have a, we have a sensational golf course that's been ranked extremely high across the country, so we would like to have a clubhouse that can accommodate large parties, have a bar restaurant that's open year-round, and, you know, and here we go.
Yeah. There you go.
Okay.
Can you back up?
Yeah. There we go. Can we start there? That's great.
All right, go to the next slide. So I guess it was probably some point last year, the township had a feasibility study done that was included in the RFP, and when we, we looked at that, we thought there were some really great efforts and ideas put in there, but as architects, we said, all right, what could we look at, or how could we look at it maybe and skin the cattle a little bit differently? This is the feasibility study that was included in the RFP, where you see in the green on the right-hand side was a two-story addition with an expansion of the banquet facility on the right, and that's, the brown rectangle is the dance floor, and you see the tables kind of going around it. And then the office and bathroom addition is on the bottom right-hand corner, which is the green area, and then the bar area is that sort of horseshoe shape in the middle with a covered sort of patio area that comes off of the top page in the blue. And we were looking at it going, all right, there's some ideas and thoughts that we could do that might be sort of more economical, might, you know, make the flow better, and maybe potentially save some money in the long run. So we kind of did this, if you flip to the two slides forward. We had done this sort of site unseen without talking to anyone, so obviously, we need to kind of dig into the details, and we started to do that a little bit with Mike and Marley in the township. But what we're proposing here in this initial concept that we prepared was to not, to keep everything on the first floor. So what you see on the right-hand side is a one-story addition rather than a two, which eliminates the need for an elevator, fire stairs, things of that nature. It still gives you the office spaces that the township's looking for to support the facility, as well as the bridal room and the restrooms. And then what we did was we pulled the bar out of the middle of the ballroom space, and that freed us up to, you know, increase the size of the ballroom and have sort of a casual bar dining space that would, you know, serve as sort of a, kind of a, let's go grab a beer here after work or after the course, instead of going to McGurk's or somewhere like that. And that looks out toward the course, to the top of the page, and then out to the driving range to the left, and that almost kind of stands as a standalone function where it could operate if the rest of the building was closed. And then the patio, we have there to the north, it gives us a little bit more opportunity to increase the size of the patio, increase the table count, and then also, some of the best views of the course are sort of to the top right and around 1:00, and it opens up that corner of the ballroom to look out over the patio and out to the course. So we just put this together, again, as sort of initial thought, as another way to, you know, attack the project and address the concerns. But again, we wanted to sort of, you know, really jump in with you all and look at some very different options, including, what does it look like if we build a second floor over the entire facility? What are the pros and cons in that, that idea, as well as, you know, what could happen if we looked at an entirely new building? There's definitely challenges with building, you know, a second floor or doing, you know, major renovations like this that impact operations, you know, while construction's going on. So as we start the project, we want to look at and talk through, you know, those pros and cons right out of the gate.
And the other thing is that the, the site lends itself to expansion on, on the one level. We don't have a lot of drop-off or grade issues, so we looked at that first before we considered the solution.
Do you want the next slide?
Any questions before we move to the next slide on the plan?
Just, just one comment, that when you look at that plan, I know there were some issues with, with the management or with Mike and Marley about, you know, the pro shop not having a sight line to the first tee, which is why we started looking at other options, but you guys have already, we've already...
We've heard another version of that.
Okay, excellent.
The one question I have is, is this the same square footage space?
As, as the two-story addition?
Yes.
It's comparable. I think it's actually a little less space.
It's comparable.
It's, it's very comparable.
Okay.
So we want to look at solutions that are...
No, that's fine. I was just curious.
Not up here, like something else is...
I got a question. In the proposed new area, the green area, is there going to be additional bathrooms to the ones that are there? Because I don't think the original ones could handle.
Yeah, their bathroom is down on the, on the lower right-hand side.
Okay.
Now, keep in mind, this is just the original concept they presented to us.
Yeah, I know, just curious if they added bathrooms.
It's probably not going to look like this.
Yeah.
There's going to be some other changes that are...
Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in.
Down, right down here.
That plan you're looking at, to the board and everybody, there was zero input from us. That was actually something that I thought, and I checked through other interviews, and we interviewed several other architects. Nobody else came with just, hey, here's our ideas. They looked at what we presented, we gave them, they didn't, there was not one phone call at all, so at least it was nice that we could see their ideas and their thoughts, and then we worked off of that with the, with the committee, and then we came up with some other ideas. But I will tell you that that was impressive, at least from my viewpoint of that they took the time to prepare a drawing like that.
No, I like it.
All the other architects did not. They did ask, hey, we'll work with you once we know your ideas, but it was nice and refreshing to have someone come with their own ideas, and then we can work off and merge, you know, what we want to do with what their thoughts are, so I did appreciate that.
And Craig, we got some good feedback in that first meeting when we first presented it. For instance, the, you know, the corner of the ballroom area was, was sort of shielded from, from the golf course. So that resulted in this plan where the blue area got extended out a little bit more and pushed to the left, so we had a lot more golf course view.
And then you can see there, the bar and the pro shop are flipped.
Yep.
So the pro shop looks out now to the first tee and the driving range, and then the bar is kind of pulled down a little bit.
Where's the pro shop? Is that the tan?
That's the, yeah, the tan, top left. And Mike had said, well, you know, it's, it was, where its location is now is really pretty good, so that was...
That's great.
No one better is good, too.
Let's not forget, we have two simulators in there.
Oh, where's they go?
So like, on days like today, we'll actually have some golfers...
Yep, the simulators are down at the bottom, tan down at the bottom.
Okay, nice.
Just to the left of the front door.
Yep.
The old office area.
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
I also wanted to thank you for the, I'm sorry, Chuck, were you asking a question?
No, I was just asking, it was two...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Two simulators, right?
Two, yes.
Yes. There's two simulators with a, with a social area in between two.
Nice. I like that.
Looks really good. I just wanted to say thank you for doing, explaining your vision of what you think is possible and, and how you run your business and, and the different steps that you take about the billing, everything, cost estimation, everything's in here, and I really appreciate that. I wanted you to know.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and as we move forward, you know, our goal is to make this even way better. Like, we want to build off of this. As Craig had said, it was literally just a sketch we did in the vacuum, so we want to work with you, hear your input, hear the community's input, and really build upon this.
And we're not locked into this approach, as Joe said. We're going to look at, we agreed to look at three different options here. One is to look at the two-story option. Maybe that's the way to go. This option certainly, and then the third one is, well, is it makes sense to start from scratch? You've got the ability to build something and keep this open while you do it, and so is that an option worth looking at? So we'll cover all three bases on that, and then it'll be in the discussions with the township, and we'll decide what's the best way to go forward.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thanks.
So what we're asking tonight for is the, the Master Concept Planning, which was one of the previous slides, is the service that's, that we're buying. So it's going to run for a couple of months, and the estimate is, or not the estimate, the quote is $39,500. Are we, are we getting the discount, or?
Are you getting a discount?
No, because you've got the standard, standard fee.
You get the discounted price.
Right.
Well, this, got the standard, which, which one are we signing up for? The $49,500 or the $39,000?
Thirty-nine. I like the thirty-nine.
So we get a discount then?
I make a vision.
All right, we get a discount.
So that's what, so the, they're going to be doing the, the, we're buying the Master Concept Planning service at this point.
So that is pricing that's offered to all of PSAT's members that we deal with across the state. We give them all a discount for, at a fixed fee, so everybody can budget it going into the process and know that it's not going to be this plus this plus this plus that.
So there's an action in order. I'll ask for a motion to, to award the Master Concept Planning fees to Kimmel Bourgatt.
Correct, thank you, Kathy.
I'll second.
Any other questions from the board? Comments? Any from the public? And we've been waiting for a long time for this, because it's, the only comment I'll have is this is a long time coming, because we looked at, you know, when they built this originally, people were, seemed to trip over the dollars to pick up the pennies, and then were left with something that, if we would have had a better concept originally, it would have been much cheaper to do 30 years ago. Let's put it that way.
But we'll do it right.
We'd be doing renovations. We'd just be putting in new carpet and paint and things like that now, rather than what we're going to do.
But we'll do it right this time, right?
Yeah, but we're, that's the plan, and that's why we had selected you guys to do this, because you did, as Craig pointed out, you guys did come in with other ideas other than what we originally had, and, and we're looking forward to working with you.
We're excited, man. Great project.
Well, let's, let's call the question first, and then I want to ask Marley to come up, because I do want to, or I guess we could do it now.
Up to you.
I do want to, you know, this is, the, the fact that we have such a great golf course and it's so popular, and I'm going to let Marley speak to that, please, if you would come up, why this, why this lends itself to putting in a first-class clubhouse.
Great club. Great club.
Hello, Marley.
Hello. How is everybody?
Hi.
Great, how are you?
Good. So Ken and I spoke briefly earlier this week, but we've had some exciting stuff happening recently. Obviously, we're really excited for the renovations to happen. happening recently. Obviously, we're really excited for the renovations to happen. Definitely much needed, and we're excited, looking forward at that. But, recently, we've got a few awards. So, we got top 50 range awards, which we've been getting over the last few years, so we are excited to be awarded that again. Recently, Garrett, our junior program coordinator, just got top 50 coaches in the world. So, that's really exciting. So, he's listed on the Operation 36 website as the top 50 coaches along with Five Ponds Golf Club. So, we're really excited about that program. It's been huge for us. It sells out every single year. It's already sold out for the summer. So, really excited about that. And then, most recently, which Mike and I are actually flying to Florida next week to accept the award on behalf of the township, we won regional, National Golf Course Owners Association. We won regional for the best golf club. So...
Fantastic.
Really excited about that. We were close to winning national, so we're hoping next year we'll get that. But, we are going to go accept that award next week, and we won for the east region.
Congratulations.
It's in the paper, too.
Congratulations.
Well done. Well done. As you guys do, you do a great job over there every year.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and again, that's why we want to give you, unhandcuff you, so to speak, and allow you to get a return on our investment.
Yeah, of course.
Because one of the things we can't do is have a large wedding in that place, and that just, it just doesn't lend itself to that. So, the whole concept is to be able to have a 200-person wedding, maximum 200-person wedding, and 170-person golf outing at the same time.
Yeah, and then serve a community, too, and have a public facility bar.
Yeah, plus the community can open year-round, two simulators, have the bar restaurant open year-round, because we do serve great food there, by the way. Anyone that hasn't eaten there, I suggest you go try it out. The food's fantastic. So, yeah, this is an exciting time, exciting stuff for us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Marley.
Thank you.
All right, any comments from the public? No? All right, being none, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Vice chair, looking forward to working with you both.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
All right. Where are we at, Tom? Professional reports. I think we're up to you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. We've got a new boiler on the way for this half of the building. The police department's all right. It's the admin side. That's why it's so cold in here. And it's going to get very, very, very unseasonably cold next week. And I've offered the employees in this little corner of the building the opportunity to work remotely for the idea that the boiler may not be on, and it won't be nice to be here. But, hopefully, we're going to get the new one soon, and we'll be back to normal lickety-split. And we'll close Monday for MLK Day. The library, however, is open.
Really?
That is correct. And there's, what?
Nothing, I'm just wondering.
That's all I've got. And our next meeting is scheduled to be February 13th, the next board meeting, board of supervisors.
Okay, Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Thursday the 13th, it goes to Friday.
Fourteenth, he said?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
He was getting polyconic, but missed it.
What, he missed it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay.
I can actually, I just...
Come on up to the podium, please.
I'm really sure my concern is like something to address here, my team here.
Well, if you're going to speak, if we're going to acknowledge you, you need to come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Raj. I work at Maxwell Pharmacy on St. Road. My boss just wanted me to talk to the tax collector, but I don't know, I think Ms. Lisa?
Yeah, that's something that you'll talk to...
I can tell you what it is?
Yeah, go ahead.
They paid their taxes late, so they have a penalty. So, they're asking for the township to waive the penalty.
Well, that's going to have to come up at the next meeting. We're not going to take action on that tonight. It's not on the agenda. So, that'll come up at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Correct?
Yeah, that's fine.
Right.
Then we can figure out what we want to do with that.
It's the biz priv tax, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Raj.
Raj. All right.
So, the 16th, Thursday the 16th, correct?
Thursday the 13th.
Thirteen.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong month, no wonder.
Today's the 16th.
I see, I got on my calendar, 13th, got it.
Thursday the 13th will be our next meeting.
Okay.
All right, let's move along. Mr. Flag.
I don't know if I can follow up, talk of a new boiler, but, so I won't even try. I just want to remind everyone to be safe, give yourself extra time when it is snowy and icy outside, and make sure you clear all of your sidewalks and walkways to make it safe for other people.
Good advice.
Speaking of which, there is two boilers down there. One's from about the original boiler that's still sitting there. So, anybody that wants to take it down to the Smithsonian Institute for...
Wants to tinker with it.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Couple hundred dollars in scrap money.
You're not, or we'll just take it out for scrap. All right, thank you, Adam. Mr. Kennard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have our January engineers report. You should have two small projects that went through Planning Commission. They should be ready for the February meeting. One's a waiver land development, and the other one's a very small project. Christhome is looking to actually reduce about 30 units over at their facility and then build just a couple cottages. So, it reduces impervious, helps out with stormwater, and it's a little nicer layout. So, it's not a big project, but they're looking to amend their prior approval. So, you should have those two in front of you in February. And then, the other comment, since people are here for the golf course, and we've kind of put it in the back burner, but we've been working hard over the last year also with Mike and Marley and mainly Kurt over at the golf course, who does a great job superintendent. We've actually had preliminary design for a couple of the bridges replacements, repairing, taking the creeks through several holes and opening them up, do plantings, and just make it a little nicer view so you can lose your ball a little bit better instead of just dropping in the water.
That's what I need.
But, there'll be actually, I hate to say this, but no mo zones will be live plantings and more gentle slopes so they can maintain it. There's a lot of erosion problems. So, we have those projects. We're looking to raise the tee box on hole 17, which is one of their signature holes, if not the signature hole, to have a better view of the pond and that green. So, we've had those. We've had survey done, preliminary engineering. They've kind of been put in, and actually, Pond 4 as well. We're doing dredging and retaining walls around Pond 4. But, what Mike and I discussed along with the Infrastructure Committee is to focus on the clubhouse right now for permitting. And what we'll do is, Mike and I spoke, and I briefly updated Tom and Ken, we'll just submit permits to DEP for the clubhouse and also Pond 4. Pond 4 is their main for irrigation. We've already done all the survey, preliminary design on the retaining walls to stop the erosion, and they would like a new spillway so they could control and drain it to access it, because that is their only, I think that's the only access for irrigation, right, is Pond 4.
Yeah, Pond 4 is also where the WMA sends our treated effluent during the summer for irrigation. So, we need a little bit more volume in there.
Almost two years ago, the project started with Mike saying, Mike Etter saying, hey, I need to dredge all the ponds on the property. So, that's got, again, pushed back, the clubhouse, the bridges. Some of the bridges are really in need of repair, and also, it doesn't allow for emergency vehicles. If you need to get an ambulance back to part of the golf course, these bridges will be able to handle emergency vehicles. So, what we decided to do is, as the clubhouse moves forward and becomes a priority, my staff is ready to, once this layout is preliminary done, I need to know which layout. I think we can avoid any major permits. We still need some significant ones to touch the pond and then build the clubhouse. Once those two projects are done, hopefully, you know, next year or so, we'll move forward with other projects as a phase two and three. But, we've actually already done the preliminary work, and we will be submitting permits probably in the next three to four months for all the work.
Excellent.
All right, that's a little update on the golf course.
Thank you, Craig. All right, supervisors, how about Janice?
Okay, all right. With winter coming on board, and it looks like it's going to be good, please make sure that you move your basketball nets back, not necessarily tonight, but in the future. Makes it easier for our Public Works guys and the Water Authority when they're doing the snowplows. Make sure you prepare for winter and have your shovels close by.
Chuck?
With the cold weather, yeah, let's stay indoors and dress warm. And if you see someone out in the street that's, they don't have a place to go, you know, any old blankets, jackets, coats, you know, help them out. They need to be warm, too. I'd like to thank the two gentlemen for their report. Excellent. I hope, look forward to working with yous. Thank you.
Nothing much to announce this week. Just, the library's open, so if you're cold, go over to the library and see what they're planning on Martin Luther King Day. And remember that we have a couple of sites. Ben Wilson, I think, is one of them, and there's another one where people can go in case of emergency for some relief from the cold. Look out after your neighbor and have a good winter, and see you next month.
Good advice, Judy.
I'd like to thank everyone for a very productive meeting. Now, we're working on a new project with our golf course. This is going to benefit the residents of the township. It's going to encourage more golfers to even come, because I hear from folks from all over say they come to our golf course because it's the best. Well, it is going to be the best. We're going to have the weddings and even other venues, all those beautiful windows that we want to put in with the beautiful scenery. So, I want to thank you for the excellent presentation, looking forward to working with you guys. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome.
So, just to piggyback on that, the golf course has its own fund, and John does a great job with our finances. So, it's not going to come out of capital projects. We're not going to have to raise our capital millage. So, it'll basically pay for itself and then the return. We expect it to be fully paid off, I would say. Well, I'll leave it up to our financial director. I'd say about seven years, John, maybe? Okay, thank you.
He's like, what?
Anyway, anyway, and we have the Ben Wilson Center, so anyone, when this heat goes off here, we'll just send them over there to work, can work remotely over there at Ben Wilson.
Look at her face.
Sure you were thrilled with that, right?
Going to five paws.
So, I want to thank, as we speak, our Public Works are outselling all our township roads, and I want to thank them while, because once again, that's a thankless job. Everyone likes to take shots at them, and I just want to thank them again, because right now, while everyone else is home, warm in their house, they're outselling the roads for us. So, with that, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
I just want to remind folks to please not park your cars in the street when the trucks are out taking care of the roads, okay? Just give everybody a heads up. Lena, did you raise your hand for some reason?
We're here from the Environmental Advisory Council. We thought the no-mo main program was not going to be in the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Uh-uh.
No, next time.
Okay.
Okay? Sorry about that. All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A second.
Thank you very much, everyone.